Our meeting will now come to order. Good afternoon to all of you who have gathered. So glad to see you on this nice spring day. So we'll get ready to start our meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we reconvene in open session and adopt the certification of closed session.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we will reconvene in open session and adopt certification of closed session. All those in favor, use the usual sign, aye.
Aye.
Certification of closed session. Whereas the Demetis County School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Paragraph 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed matters were conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Demetis County School Board hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. Dr. Elaine Pearson, District 1.
I certify.
Dwayne Walker, District 2.
I certify.
Barbara Pittman, District 3.
I certify.
Mary Benjamin, District 4.
I certify.
Jason Brown II, District 5.
I certify.
Madam Chair, all certify.
Thank you. You will now stand and join us into the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Secretary, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the agenda as written. All those in favor, use your sign.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is adopted. Closed session report.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the personnel report as it was presented to us today.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the personnel report as presented. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The personnel report is approved. Approval of student matters?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration and expel student number E-03/25-1 because they pose a threat to the health and safety of students and staff.
Second.
We, it has been moved in second that, that we accept, that we accept the recommendation of administration and expel student number E-03/25-1. Finding that the student poses a threat to the health and safety of the other students. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any. Any. None. If the student matters report is approved. Board matters? Aye. Four to one. What did he say?
He said no. He didn't ask the question, so I won't have.
I thought you said no, yes. Okay.
Four to one.
One is, one, this group, one net. Sorry about that. Closed session, I mean, board matters.
Yes, we have Mr. Ampe, I believe is going to come forward and talk to you about telecommunications.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings. Good afternoon.
I'm coming to you just even to seeking board approval toward the Internet and WAN contract to Glow Fiber. And Glow Fiber is the current vendor we have for Internet and WAN. We have had them for five years. They've been very good. Their service has been good and, and support's been good. And they are supporting approximately like thirty school divisions already. And what they also offered this time, we have a $21,000 savings from our last contract. And over a five-year time, which is the length of the contract, that's over $100,000. So we're very happy to be able to present this to you.
Do you question? We need to approve the agreement.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agreement with Glow Fiber's for the WAN connection.
Second.
It has moved in second that we accept the recommendation to award the contract to Glow Fiber Shindal Communications Company. All of those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the things you noticed in your, you noted in your proposal was there was going to be a savings of about 20,000, which is unusual because most people are asking for more. Why, why savings each year?
I think it's a saving because they've been able to get more customer. I think Shindal is a company, Glow Fire, Shindal, they kind of merged. But what, what have happened over the years, they've been able to get more and more school districts. And I think they're more interested in getting a lot of clients and they putting out good service than trying to make a whole lot off a few clients. So they have steadily added to their, the type of capabilities they have and the number of school divisions they have. So I think that's one of the reasons why they're able to do that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Boiler replacement and upgrades.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, so today we come before you, we've already, we came last month to talk about the emergency replacement boiler, which has already been procured and they're working on. This is kind of going back to old business where we were, what we were trying to do prior to the boiler fire at the middle school, we were trying to get all three of these schools replaced. Demetis Middle School, Demetis Elementary School, and Midway. So this is a proposal for Midway and Demetis Elementary to have their boilers replaced. We have finished that procurement. We did get three bids. The low bid was to retrofit services. We were comfortable with that. We've dealt with them in the past. They actually worked on the chiller projects and are also installing the Demetis Middle School boiler. So I come before you just to get your approval to award retrofit services officially, the bid for the Demetis Elementary School and Midway Elementary School boilers in the amount of $957,000. This, this will be funded by the county CIP fiscal year '25.
Do you have a quick question?
Yes, sir.
You know, when we had the malfunction with the boiler, we did have to close the school for a bit of time.
Yes, sir.
But we have to close it again for the repairs.
No, we've, we've asked them, they're going to try to, because that, that school can operate, especially during the warmer months, it can operate on one boiler. So we're going to ask them to try to work on, disconnect one boiler, keep one connected, replace it, then connect that one, disconnect the other, so we don't have to miss any school. But both of these, Demetis Elementary School and Midway Elementary, it's only work on one boiler, they're going to be done when school ends. That's when that project's going to start. So the middle school, they're going to work around schools, school.
Thank you.
No, we definitely don't want to close, close it again.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Walters? I, I move that we accept the boiler replacement upgrades.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the recommendation coming from Mr. Walters on the boilers. All of those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye. On the aye. I say it. Thank you.
I'm next also.
He's next.
You're next to?
Campus.
Next to, yeah. So this, this one is a campus landscaping grounds maintenance bid that we put out. We got seven proposals back. We did a lot of research and interviewed a lot of different companies. And we were proud to say we were able to award this project to a local company. It's Absolute Lawn Solutions LLC. They actually stepped in and when we announced that we were awarding the bid, we started to negotiate with ABM, who's our current landscaping company, who would like to terminate their contract early as of March 31st. So we were able, actually able to speak to Absolute Lawn Solutions and they're going to begin April 1 instead of the traditional July 1. We thought this was appropriate because first of all, you know, lawn care is difficult to begin in July. You know, you're in the middle of the season. So they're going to start April 1. We did prorate April, May, and June for their, for their, I guess it wasn't a contract officially, was it Brenda? It was just, they're going, they're going to do it for three months for the prorated amount and then they'll enter, enter their contract July 1. It is a five-year contract with a optional termination by either side, three months in advance each year. And it's $900,000.
Is this, is this more or less than the contract we already had?
It is approximately the same. See, the contract we had before was landscaping and athletic fields together. So we pulled them apart. And this ended up being roughly, you know, within, you know, maybe a couple thousand dollars, I think, yeah. The same for the landscaping and maintenance at our schools.
So it's going to be same company, but?
No, it's going to be a new company.
No, no. Same company's going to do fields and landscaping?
No, ma'am, we're still working on the athletic fields. We haven't.
It's not with this.
No, ma'am. That, that, we had to put that one back out to bid. We've gotten the information back. We're working through that to make sure we get the best, best company for that.
I really appreciate that you're going to be going with a local company.
Yeah, it was, it was nice to be able to award it to a local company. Of course, you have to do what's fiscally responsible, but it was this time. So it was very nice to be able to do that. Question of curiosity, did ABM make a proposal? They did. They did. They did. It was not competitive.
Do we not have people in-house that are currently doing this work? Has it always been contracted?
It's kind of, it's kind of like we did our janitorial. As people retired, instead of hiring new, we replaced them with contractors. It's, it's more cost-effective. It's difficult to find people, especially specialty type of landscaping. So we have one person who's retiring at the end of June, but then that'll be the end of our landscaping that we have on staff. It'll all be contracted at that point.
So we just have one more person that's in-house and then the rest of the maintenance could all contracted out?
Yes, oh, the landscaping, yes, sir, yeah. And then our maintenance can focus on, you know, plumbing, HVAC, electrical, and things like that instead of having to also do the landscaping.
Is grass cutting in this?
It is.
Yeah. And I think in-house, we primarily taking care of the grass cutting versus?
Oh, yeah, we did in the past, but as they retired, instead of replacing them, we added on. We've actually added on with this, we've added some areas that weren't being cut before. The interior of the middle school, the courtyard, the interior of Demetis Elementary, the courtyard. We had always taken care of those in the past, but they're added into here. So really, we actually have a little bit better of a deal because it's a little bit, roughly the same price, but it's more grass to cut.
So they bring their own equipment?
They do.
So we can get out of that?
We've mostly gotten out of that business, our equipment. We did do some surplus equipment sales when we hired the last company three years ago. It, it, it's, we, we have, I think, two lawnmowers right now. We have one down at Transportation where they cut their grass and the maintenance grass. And then we do have a tractor, but we don't plan to surplus any of that. It's still good equipment that we can use.
Something might happen that we need to?
Yeah, and we actually have a Toro, I don't know the model, but it's a Toro field, field cutter that actually cut, can cut our football field. But we prefer someone to bring in a reel mower, so it's pure. They're not getting the seed from other places and putting it on the football field or it grows weeds and things like that, so.
So you made a point about cost efficiency.
Yeah.
I mean, have we found it to be effective? Because usually when people have conversations about contracting out work, it tends to cost a little bit more of that than it does in-house.
Well, the efficient part of it is, it is cost-efficient in that we're able to predict exactly what our needs are. We're able to budget that much easier. But the big thing is we're also able to get more of a professional-type service for our schools, you know, so they look nicer. It's difficult when you have in-house people because they're usually stretched thin and they're trying to cut eight different campuses. And it, you know, in this climate, it's hard to find enough people to do that. You go to these lawn service companies and they're, they're efficient at that. They know how to do that. They know how to attack these lawns to make sure that they are, you know, doing them as efficiently as possible. So it's not just cost efficiency, it's also, you know, quality service that we're looking for with that.
And I think they bring a crew in all at once.
They do.
Unless having one man going from building to building.
They do. They'll bring three people that'll cut the high school, then they'll go cut the middle school, then they have it on a schedule. And they also do some more land, I'm sorry, excuse me. They do landscaping in addition to cutting the grass. They take care of the flowers, they mulch and things like that, which is important. I know the previous company, ABM, was storing equipment and mulch and whatnot over at our spring. Is that part of the deal with the new? That we're going to store the mulch, but we're going to find a better place. That's one thing that Matt, our Director of Facilities Operations, you know, was not a fan of, neither was I. We're going to find an appropriate place to store it where it's not sitting in the middle of the spring sports complex. Yeah. And, and that was not done out of laziness. That was done out of being able to get a tractor in easily, but there's other places we can do that. Yeah, yeah. I just know, I know we don't park cars there anymore, but when we did, it was kind of in the way. Yeah, no doubt. Yeah, we're going to find a place where we can get it where it's easy to get to, but not in the middle of the action. Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Any seeking approval? I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the contract with Absolute Lawn Solutions for a period of 15 months for the first year with the option to renew.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the contract for campus landscaping and grounds maintenance. All of those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye. I say it. Thank you.
I think I want more, right? Yeah, I think so.
I think it, I think this.
Mr. Walters.
I think this is the time, the board, a member from the last meeting did ask for us to have a public hearing relative to the, whether or not the board would move forward with surplusing the land behind Midway Elementary School. So Mr. Walters is going to just speak briefly to that, but I believe there are some people here to speak this evening.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Do you want me to wait? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, okay. I, I went through and made a timeline of this because this has been kind of a convoluted. It's no surprise, I'm not a real estate agent, I'm not really familiar with that. So we worked through it, but I wanted to make sure that I was able to put on the public record exactly as things transpired. In August of '24, I was approached by Baylor Construction verbally inquiring about purchasing TP-187A. The DCPS staff looked at that land as we always do to see whether we could center that land surplus, meaning, I think I explained this last time, but could we get to it? Or could someone get to it without interrupting operations? Is it land that we may or may not need anymore, things of that nature? We needed to make sure we did that before we even discussed it. In September, we determined that the land was surplus. And then we also had Hallmark Properties perform an independent appraisal. We then sought the counsel of the Demetis County Attorney's Office to assist in receiving offers on the land. In February of '25, Baylor Construction did present a written offer to purchase the land for $114,080. We did decline that offer because it was a little bit lower than the independent appraisal. On February 13th, Baylor Construction sent a written offer for $115,000, which was much more in line with the independent appraisal. On March 4th, a public notice went out for a hearing in the Progress Index and on publicnoticevirginia.com. And I want to make a correction, I think we did say the Richmond Times-Dispatch at the last meeting, but it was the Progress Index. And it was also in publicnoticevirginia.com. On March 11th, Baylor Construction's offered to purchase the 18.439 tract of land that it joins the Midway Field behind Midway Elementary, was presented to the school board in the price of $115,000. In response to several public requests for information about the property, including other verbal inquiries about purchasing the property, it was determined that the matter warranted a public hearing, which I think we did last school board meeting. On March 16th, the public notice announcing the public hearing about this tract of land was placed in the Progress Index, publicnoticevirginia.com, and also on the Demetis County Public School Facebook page. On March 20th, we received another written offer from Amazing Homes LLC, CAG Homes LLC, and Ashby Enterprises for $125,000. So that's where we are to this point, as far as what we've received. The administrative considerations, directions needed concerning how to proceed from the board on how to proceed with this. I did want to add recommendations because I think it's important that this is said. After allowing public comments today, I, I would recommend that I think Demetis County, the schools would recommend that the board make a decision on how to proceed with this. If you desire to continue to sell the land, I believe the appropriate course of action would be to discard all current written offers and give a period of 10 days for anyone to issue a written offer. And that would allow the two that have already issued written offers the chance to reissue and amend their offers. I believe that's the course of action if we decide to sell. I think that's the fair way to go. If the desire is to forego the sale of the property, then obviously the appropriate action would be to either vote not to sell it or just not take any action. But I, I did want to make sure that it was, it was understood exactly what happened leading up to this. And I know we're going to have some public comments, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Do you have any comments for Mr. Walters right now? No comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
I can read this right? We're going to get ready for our public comments. We do have one, but before the comments, I have, I will read this state.
You have two public comments?
That was one. I thought that was an address. I have two, excuse me, I have two for public comments. I was looking at address line and not the, not the name line. Before you come forth, I call you, I will have to read the statement. "The board ensures that public participation at any specially called meeting of the school board is fair and respectful. Upon recommendation of the board chair, public hearings and forums are typically designed to receive substantial community input and individual comment. Sign-up sheets will be made, will be made available at each door for those attending who wish to address the board. Time limits will usually be set for each speaker to ensure everyone can address the board. Typically, each speaker will be allotted, allocated five minutes during public hearings and forums rather than three minutes during the public address portion of the regular meeting. So you will be allowed five minutes." And now I'm calling Alan Herschel?
No comment at this time.
Hanschel?
Yes, no comment at this time.
No comment, okay. Patrick Lloyd?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, I'm sorry, is it, am I good to go? Okay, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Again, my name is Patrick Lloyd. I reside at 5406 Midway Drive in Sutherland. I'm here today respectfully to voice my opposition regarding the proposed resolution to declare the land behind Midway Elementary, Parcel 187A, as surplus and to authorize its sale to Baylor or anyone else. Over the past two weeks, since I last spoke to you all, I've heard from dozens of community members, neighbors, parents, residents, who have all reached out to me directly through either Facebook or I've, I've met them on the road and, you know, baseball practices and everything else. And the message has been overwhelmingly clear that our community does not want this land sold. Not just to one particular builder, not to anyone. The land is the only remaining large parcel adjoining Midway Elementary, as you all know, and one of the few left near any school site in the county. Declaring it surplus now closes the door on any future use that might benefit our students or the school system, whether it's expanded recreational space, an outdoor learning area, or room for school facility growth in the future. Once this land is sold and developed, those opportunities will be gone. Once the land is sold, the school system has no control over what could happen next. We could make our concerns known to the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors, obviously, but there's no guarantee that our vision for the area will become reality. The only way to ensure this land continues to serve educational or community purposes is to retain its ownership by the school system. We know that the prospective buyer also already owns land, the first prospective buyer also owns the land directly to the right of Midway Elementary. If this sale goes through, they would control over 45 acres surrounding the school, which opens the door to a large subdivision being built next to Midway, which could bring more traffic, infrastructure strain, and potentially an increase in school enrollment, all while reducing the school's future flexibility. In addition, I just want to express my personal concern, shared by several others in the surrounding area in the community, the environmental risk. Many nearby homes rely on well water and a large-scale construction endeavor with land grading and new well drilling could disrupt the local, local water table, impose real challenges to the residents who live in the nearby area. Again, I know that we have, you know, the, the timeline has gone over. I still, I do feel like this is happening at a incredibly rushed pace. While the school board is voting today to declare whether or not this is indeed surplus land, and I know it was mentioned in the last meeting, I, I, it's not yet approved whether or not the school board will even retain the proceeds of the sale, is, is what I gathered from the last meeting. So it seems as, as though we're being currently asked to declare the property surplus and move forward with a permanent decision before all the details have been finalized. Financially, the sale price of 125 or 115, or any price for that matter, is, seems appealing on paper, but in the context of our school's capital needs, it seems that it's barely a drop in the bucket. If we, if we ever needed to reacquire 18 acres next to a school, we certainly wouldn't be able to do it at that price. We'd lose a massive, long-term resource, in my opinion, for a small, one-time gain. This, it, to me and to those of us in the community and the nearby area, this isn't just about what we might lose today, it's about what we may need in five, or 10, or 15, 20 years from now. Selling this land is a one-day, one-way decision. Once it's gone, it's gone. But if we keep it, we keep our options open for students, for our schools, and for the future of our county. I encourage each of you to ask yourselves if the land selling, if selling this land now for a short, short-term financial gain is truly worth the long-term effects it may have on the school system, the environment, and the families who already live in the area. I hope you all will listen to the community, stop the process now, and protect the land and preserve the future of Midway Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since there are no, have no other signed up to comment, board members, I would accept your comments now.
Madam Chair, I would love to make a statement about this. I, I'm honestly a little bit disappointed at the, I'll just be frank. I've heard from a lot of people that I don't see here today. And I know some of them gave me reasons why they couldn't be here and whatnot. But I know personally that there are a lot of people that have strong opinions about this decision that we're faced with today. And many of them share the same sentiment that Mr. Lloyd expressed here publicly. And so I have been forced to wrestle with what part I may play in this process. For me, there are a number of issues that, that make this a difficult decision or that complicate this decision, I should say. Number one, the process of surplusing property for the school system, I think, is tricky when it comes to land. Because while it's very easy to declare that a vehicle is no longer safe or usable for the school system, you get to 250, 300,000 miles, the wheels are wobbling. We've, we surplus this vehicle. It's not quite as easy, I don't think, to make such a declaration or determination about property because while we can consider possibilities, it's almost impossible to definitively say that there would never be a use for that land. We can make a pretty strong argument, I think, and I think at times that, that argument has been made. But that, I think, makes it difficult for us to say to the community with confidence that we're certain that the land could never be used. Now personally, just from looking at this, I've taken time to do a little bit of research and, and ask a lot of questions. I don't see where this land can or will be used by our school system in the very near future, probably not in my lifetime. But having said that, I can't definitively say that the land would never be useful to the school system. So that presents a, a problem for me. Secondly, because I-
Secondly, because I have heard from a number of members in the community, I have to weigh personally where the value of the land goes, how do I weigh the value of the land versus the will of the people that I've heard from? That's not an exact science either, because I only hear from the people I hear from, and there are a lot of people I don't hear from. And so it's possible that there may be more people in favor of surplusing this land than against. But as it sits, I've only heard from people that are against surplusing land. So the question is, do I want to risk upsetting people for the reward of $115,000 or $125,000? And so that raises another question. I think the number that's been presented to us at some point was 11 and 1/2 million, and I may be misspeaking on that, Mr. Walters, 11 and 1/2 million dollars in capital projects that we're trying to tackle. We just don't have funding for those projects. And so we're looking at, and I don't have a math degree, so I don't know what $125,000 is percentage-wise to 11 and 1/2 million, if somebody wants to calculate that, but I know it's a very low percentage. So we would still be facing a deficit in regards to the capital projects that we want to tackle. And then next year, we're in the same boat with 18 less acres to sell. So for me, while I love the idea of, hey, let's get some money to take care of a project, because these projects need to be done, I believe that wholeheartedly. Is it worth, for the momentary satisfaction of being able to say, hey, we brought in a little bit of money to take care of a part of this, is it worth the risk of upsetting our constituency and the people that we serve? Having said that, I think it's pretty obvious at this point, for anybody that's listening here, should we call this to a vote today to surplus? I would not vote in favor of surplusing the land. However, I think it's important for us to acknowledge a couple of things before we were to even call for such a vote, and one of those things is this, I have done the best I can to look into the process that has played itself out here, and I want to state very clearly and publicly that I do not believe that anyone involved in this process has done anything unethical or immoral. I don't believe that anyone has done anything questionable. I think everything's been done legally. I think there are some challenges for us to consider as far as how can we be more transparent, which I don't think that's because, I don't think we were intentionally lacking transparency, but I think there's a perception there. And so I think that if nothing else out of this, we learned that maybe we can look into ways as a board to, to be more transparent with stuff like this. But at the end of the day, I think the process has played itself out exactly how it's supposed to. No one did anything unethical or immoral. The people that initiated this process did so well within their rights. There's no reason why they couldn't do what they did. There's no reason why they couldn't approach the county and say, hey, I'm interested in this property, would you be willing to offer it for sale? We entertained the offer, the public was made aware of the offer, and then democracy played itself out in real time right here in Duwaney County. The people have expressed themselves, those who wanted to. Should we walk away from this today, which that would be my vote to just say, I think we should choose not to surplus this land? It does not fix the fact that we still have 11 and 1/2 million dollars worth of capital projects that we need funding for. And so I think that for us, one thing that we can take away from this as a positive is making our constituents aware of the fact that we do have a lot of needs in our school system that require funding that we don't currently have. I have learned a lot just in the last year and a half about how funding works for the public school system, and I've learned that most of the money that we get comes with strings attached, so we don't just get to pick and choose what we do with the money that we have. We get the money through grants and through law, the legal system through the state, but every dime they give us, they say, well, this money is for this, and this money is for that. So if we find a need such as those that Mr. Walters has found in that 11 and 1/2 million dollars, if it's not accounted for in that state or federal funding, then we have to go find the money to take care of those needs. And I think that we need to really have more discussion with our community about that and make the community aware that, hey, there are needs here that we need to take care of, and if we're not going to sell this land, okay, but I want to also acknowledge, though, that in the time that Mr. Walters has been in the role that he is in, I believe that he is, the statement's been made that we can't generate revenue, and that's true. But I think Mr. Walters has saved our school system a lot of money in creating systems and processes by which we maintain our facilities, which in the long run is going to benefit us towards those 11 and 1/2 million dollars in projects. And I truly believe that what he was doing here by allowing this process to play out was just another example of him trying to take care of what he's been tasked with doing, which is finding ways to get these things done. So I appreciate the effort that he put into this. I know that with this, along with other issues we've been working on, that a lot of people have been very, people are passionate. People are passionate about these subjects, and sometimes when you're passionate, you say things that aren't fair, and a lot of times that aren't necessarily true. And so I want to be clear that I respect and appreciate the work that's been done to this end, but at the end of the day, I personally think that it's not in our best interest as we represent the community to make the decision to surplus the land. So I just want to make that statement publicly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I would also like to say that when you talk about people are passionate, they assume things, say things, and many of which the things that have been said, Facebook, Twitter, whatever, those things were not true. And the way to find out the true information is to come to the public hearings. We held some hearings on the bell schedule issue we had recently. Many people came out, talked at the elementary schools. People could have attended here for that tonight as well. Of course, this is for the land issue, but at no time, you know, a local company looked up, they found out who owned it, and came to us and made an offer, which started that process going. There was no backroom deal, there was no, somebody picked out that we were going to sell the land to and not give everybody else a chance. None of that was true. And a lot of people jumped on that bandwagon. They made an offer, and someone else has made an offer. And so that's the way the process goes, and it's, we have, we have not even been brought the question of, do you want to surplus it? So tonight is the first time that the vote comes to surplus it. Now, people that made an offer, they did their due diligent homework. They went, looked up the plot, oh, these people own this land, we'll make an offer. That's business. And so this wasn't in any way, shape, or form meant to be anything but normal business. I also would like to point out, we had people approach us to buy some land behind Sutherland one time. We did the same thing. We looked at it, couldn't find a way for them to get to it without crossing our property, so we didn't surplus that. We also sold a small piece of land to a local business, because it was landlocked and they needed to turn a truck around over behind the, you know, Duwaney Elementary. So this is a normal process, it is not something that anybody concocted up for this moment. This is normal things that have been before us before, and we have received a lot of input and from people who live over there, and so that's, that's what we should do. We should have public interest and public comment. So I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
Well, I did want to touch on a few of the themes with what Ms. Pittman had shared and Pastor Walker. You know, it really boils down to, I mean, people usually run on these, you know, phrases of transparency. It's a pretty easy talking point for a lot of people running for office to say they want to be transparent, people buy into it. One of the things that, you know, I said, especially when I was running for school board, is that, you know, I don't want, you know, transparency in the way that we say it, I want community, right? Usually when people say transparency, it's I'm having a conversation and I make it public and you get to hear what I'm saying. You know, what I advocated for was community, you know, not I'm having a conversation with someone and you get to hear it, but you actually get to be a part of the conversation. The reason I bring that out is, you know, because I do want to challenge the rest of the board for us to, you know, reconsider how we can make this more of a conversation, how we can make this more community-oriented, and have to focus less on the transparency part, right? You know, have public spaces and discussion, because there are a lot of people that had a lot of opinions, one way or the other, about the sale. There were a lot of people who didn't have the privilege to learn the things that we got to learn throughout the process. I do not deal with land in my day-to-day job, so there were a lot of things that I did not know about, selling land, surplusing, et cetera. I now know it, and I will definitely be sure to use it in the future, but, you know, we should also be affording the rest of Duwaney County, you know, specifically our working families, you know, that privilege to be able to have this conversation with us. And that dispels a lot of, you know, mistruth that may be out there, right? You know, I'm not out here peddling any mistruth, because I've been informed on how the process happened, and, you know, I have confidence in the people that I have confidence in. However, you know, had I not been a part of that discussion, things probably would look a different way. I also looked at the clock when this discussion started, it was right at 4:20 PM. This is something that I brought up earlier in the year when we did our board structuring. You know, 4:20 is not a pretty easy time or accessible time for, you know, working families in the community to be a part of this discussion. I know we did have a meeting at one of our elementary schools, and, you know, people attended, but a lot of people didn't attend. And as you pointed out, you know, many, many people in the community have an opinion about this, many of them have voices, but those are things that we have left unheard, simply because we are not making this super accessible to everyone. And I say that as a challenge, more of a constructive critique, not necessarily something to bash anyone, but I think that's, you know, something that we should also take away from this conversation. Whether the sale happens, it doesn't happen, whether it's labeled surplus or isn't labeled as surplus, at the end of the day, have we made things more accessible for Duwaney County working families? I'm not sure. And that's the challenge that I have for the rest of us as board members, to really restructure what we're doing here with our schools, so that our decision-making brings in our, again, working families who are the cornerstone of Duwaney community.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Madam Chair, I could echo everything that has been said, but particularly to what Mr. Brown just said regarding community. I think that Reverend Walker and I found out in the last two weeks just how strong the community around Midway is. Lots of phone calls, lots of conversations. I did not get so much negativity as I got questions. Some of them I could answer, some of them I couldn't. I would remind them of this meeting tonight, but there was some real concern as to what was taking place and how it was taking place. And I hope that tonight, we have laid a lot of that to rest, because we have not tried to do anything that wasn't out in the open. But I appreciate so much you coming tonight and presenting your thoughts on this, and those who called me, and even those comments I read on Facebook, because we wouldn't have known, because like Jason said, they're not here tonight, many of them might work. But I thank you.
Are there any other, any additional comments?
If I could respond in, I don't know if in solidarity, in preacher terms, I want to say an amen to what Mr. Brown said. First of all, I agree with what you're saying about community, I think that is transparency. But to the end of the idea of having a later meeting, you raised that concern last year at the beginning of our term on the board, and for the sake of transparency, I'll acknowledge here that I voted to go with the four o'clock after there was some discussion about it. I do believe that when we have meetings about things that it's clear the community is very passionate about, we should consider later meeting times. I do believe that. And I will acknowledge that our school board leadership did do that with the staggered bell schedule for the community forums. I think it was six o'clock or something like that, it was later times. My understanding is, there was not very good attendance at the first one, even with the later time. The second one had much better attendance, I don't know how much better, but I do think it would behoove us to maybe consider doing a later, more convenient meeting time for situations like this. I think there are, well, the school board meetings, there's a discussion to be had about that, and we had that last year. You know, every time we get together on the first or second Tuesday of the month, many times it's almost clerical, you know, there isn't necessarily a big decision, and we've got a lot of employees that are in the room. And so I respect the idea that we want to be respectful of their time. But I agree with you, Mr. Brown, that when we're making a big decision like this, it would do us well, for the sake of community, to accommodate as many people as possible. And if that means having a later meeting time, then so be it. I would, I would, I'd be up for that. I think it's a discussion we should continue moving forward, for the sake of transparency and community. That being said, if there's no other, I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair, is this the appropriate time to do that, or is that okay?
Yes.
I want to make a motion, I would like to make a motion that we vote not to surplus the land at this time. Now, I'm not sure how a motion like that would work, because I don't know legally if we have to put time restraints on that, I don't, because if 200 years from now, my great-great-great-great-great-grandson is serving on the school board and finds out that the land is worthless and somebody wants to pay for it, I don't want to...
Well, I think you could, you can make a motion not to surplus it, and at some point in the future, someone can make a motion that you do surplus it. So I mean, it's a moving target.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we not surplus the land at this time.
It has been moved in second that we not surplus the land at this time. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have been.
Madam Chair, we didn't have anybody speak to the bell schedule at this, this meeting, but I would like to say very similarly, is we have a problem. And the problem was children getting to school late because we don't have enough bus drivers and enough substitute drivers. So a proposal was made, and we'll need some more proposals, because that particular proposal, we got a lot of negative feedback on it, and we were desperately trying to figure out, how can we get our kids to school on time when we don't have enough drivers, enough buses, enough things? We have, before that proposal came out, and many came out against it, the three weeks before that, I was receiving phone calls very often about my kid missed algebra again, my kid missed history again, my kid missed reading. I was receiving those phone calls, what are you going to do about it? We, you know, the bus is late every single day. It happened to be a driver that was out for cancer, and there was a substitute in that route. And so it was, so we were looking for some way, Mr. Walters did a lot of work and research on it to, you know, how can we do it? Now, possibly, we may not do that, we're looking for some more suggestions, what else can we do? So people with thinking outside the box and great minds, we need your suggestions, we need to figure out what can we do? We can't continue having, you know, 30 kids every day miss first period. I mean, so we got to do something. We appreciate your input on that as well.
We do have another session this week, Thursday evening at 6 o'clock at the high school, so we welcome any solutions to that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just adjournment.
A motion to adjournment, anyone?
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.